This is the January 13th meeting of the Appropriations Committee. Those meeting, those committee members in attendance are Jim Walsh, Russ Denver, Don Starks, Jim Broderick, Eric Madison, Sam Pizanelli, and Rocco Carabina. This is also a joint meeting with the Select Board and the Board of Public Works. So with that said, first item on the agenda is the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. Guys, if you want to come on up.
Hey Danny.
So I've kind of reached out to both boards in us trying to develop our budget expectations for FY16. One of the variables out there is the implementation of the enterprise funds for both the water and sewer funds that was voted on at the last annual town meeting. And I'm under the impression that there's a proposed agreement out there, but no agreement at this point between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Public Works in that regard. And I was kind of hoping that maybe by getting everybody around the same table and kind of hashing this out, we might be able to come to some agreement to get this started because we are really in need of deciding exactly how this is gonna happen, otherwise we can't do our budget projections. So with that said, I don't know if anybody wants to give an update as to where we're at with that agreement?
Do you want to start Nick?
I could just offer that there's, the Board of Selectmen has considered the agreement over a few different meetings and also still had some questions. They were in receipt of detailed information, but they did have some questions. So I think that it's the Board of Selectmen's wanting to get together and see if those questions can be answered.
Sure. What Nick had shared with me was that the Board of Selectmen really wanted to understand, and I think I have this correct, what the numbers really were before they made a decision to move forward. And I can try to speak to that if I can, and if you don't mind, I'll start simple and if simple doesn't work, I'll get more detail. I brought 15 copies, so there should be almost enough for everybody here. The sheet that's being passed around is a sheet that the DPW is typically put together every year. Since the DPW is responsible for multiple divisions, we typically take, so we can look at the big picture, we take all the division budgets and we put them on a total summary sheet so we can see what the total DPW budget looks like. We can look at trends and things like that. So what you see in front of you is a spreadsheet and you like, I probably have to put your glasses on to read it, but we have the various divisions within the DPW summarized. The numbers that you see on this spreadsheet in the Request Fiscal Year 16 column, which is about midway centered on the sheet, those are the numbers that have been submitted to the Appropriations Committee today. They're identical to what the committee has as part of their individual package. The things I want to highlight in terms of speaking to the enterprise fund dollars are the lines that I've highlighted in yellow. And I've worked with Sarah on these cost items to develop as best we can at this point an estimate of what those costs are. None of us know exactly what those costs are going to be going forward, but they are what, as I said, the best estimate that Sarah can put together right now. So if you look at the Sewer Division, which is halfway down the sheet, Sewer 440, you will see there are four lines that are highlighted in yellow, and those are the employee benefits, the Medicare, the Workman's Comp, the health insurance, the retirement contributions that is estimated at this point. Those total $113,000, $1,013,81. That's the biggest impact that comes out of creation of the enterprise fund is to take costs that have traditionally been funded by the general fund and put them into the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds and have them carried by the ratepayers as opposed to being carried by the taxpayers. The same type of costs are carried forward in the Water Enterprise Fund, and as you look down the sheet about two-thirds of the way down, you'll see the same four lines that are highlighted in yellow, and those total $108,841. Again, the same four categories of employee-related expenses. In addition to that, I've highlighted a couple of other lines. When we drafted the enterprise fund policy almost a year ago now at this point, we did talk about allocating equipment costs, vehicle costs, and other costs related to running the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund to the enterprise fund budgets. So we have also taken things like vehicle repair, which has traditionally been carried 100% by a highway budget, and allocated a percentage of those costs to the enterprise funds. Same thing on fuel costs. We've taken a percentage of the fuel costs and allocated those to the enterprise fund. And again, you can see the costs that are built into this year's proposed budget as a result of those cost shifts. When we drafted the policy last year, we tried to keep it simple. You know, the game plan was to indicate that it was the Board of Public's work's intent to cover all water and sewer-related employee costs, all water and sewer-related equipment costs, all water and sewer-related capital costs, and really that's simple. Not to be looking to the general fund for any type of subsidies to maintain the water and sewer business. What we had proposed was that the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds would not charge other departments or other divisions for any costs or any support that those divisions provide to those other departments within the town. And likewise, that we didn't expect that any of the departments would charge the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds for any support costs that they might have for Water and Sewer. Again, keep it simple. The things that we can directly attribute to the enterprise have the enterprise carry.
Could you give me an example of what support costs would be?
In which way?
In the way that we wouldn't charge you for it.
Like every other town department, we rely on the town account as an example.
Okay, got it.
And you know, the town account in some communities, a portion of the costs of the town finance department might be allocated to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. Likewise, as an example, staff that exists with the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund plow the town streets. Likewise, we're not looking for compensation to come back for that support.
Thank you.
Has either board thought about, I mean, this is, my opinion only, the committee hasn't really discussed it, but this is like nailing 95% of what we were going for when we recommended the enterprise fund. And it's doing exactly what we hoped that we'd do, and that is put the costs associated with those services on that, those services. With that said, is there any discussion down the road of looking at some of those indirect costs? So for example, has updates become necessary for the GIS system, or does that, updates become necessary for the town's accounting software? I can't remember the name of it. Unit Software, for example, all very expensive programs, that some of that, particularly if those updates or upgrades are born off the needs of the water or the sewer department, should those not, should some of that not be born? And I don't even know that we need to nail that down. I guess what I'm looking for is in an agreement, the room that we look at, reevaluate after a year or after two years or something like that.
And I'll start, and certainly feel free to jump in. What we have proposed in the policy was that changes to the agreement could be made, but they would be made with the mutual agreement of both boards. So this was necessarily intended to be cast in stone forever, but it was not to allow one board or the other board to make those decisions under oath.
Does the Select Board have a sense of how you feel on all this?
We started working on this, what, last year, around the time of the town meeting? And we're obviously in favor of the direction that it's going in. I think it's important, I know we started with the bigger costs, and I know we had talked about, we don't want to nitpick, you know, you don't want to get to the point where, yes, we're charging you for this, but then you're charging us for the water that the Town Hall uses, and you know, little things like that. But I think we're heading in the right direction, and I think if we nail down the big items now, then we can look at it, you know, revisit it and fine-tune it over the next couple of years.
So would then be fair, with both boards, look at it, and what's being presented here before us is the numbers that we can then take to do our budget forecast for FY16 and start developing the FY16 recommendations?
Yeah.
We don't want to get, you know, halfway down the stream and have the, you know, the drive turn on us.
Can I just ask an elementary question? You said 95%. What's the other 5% that you were looking for?
Well, that varies from person to person on the committee, but I think in a general sense, I think we're looking that all the costs associated with water and sewer are borne by water and sewer. So that to me would include the indirect costs, some of the things that we talked about.
Okay.
Understand that that, you know, let me not detract from the fact that I think I can speak for the committee when I say we're thrilled with the progress. We're thrilled with the, both boards, you know, working toward this. So we're not trying to push any particular agenda, and if we can get an agreement on what's being presented for us here tonight, we'd be thrilled, and we know what direction now they're going, and we can start doing our budget work. And that's really what we were hoping to get out tonight.
I mean, how far do you break it down? Do we start building the Town Hall for water? IT moved into the high school, so they're going to give us some support. Do we build a high school for water? I mean, how?
No, but I think that when you start talking about, and that's, you know what, to be honest with you, that's between your two boards, and it's not within our purview to really, I mean, like I said, we're really hitting 95% of what we really thought we needed to accomplish here. So, but when you do start talking about upgrades to the town, when the need for those upgrades are borne by the water sewer, then yeah, I think a part of that cost should be shared by it. And an example would that be, might be, an upgrade to Munis for the water and sewer billing, things like that. So, but again, I'm expressing my personal opinion and not that of the committees, and there's really no, I mean, I think the committee is pretty thrilled with what's going on to date, so.
Through my chair, if I can, since it's got to be a joint meeting, the Board of Public Works did take a vote to absolutely support what you see in front of you. So we've already made the motion, had the discussion, and then took the vote, so.
I think we're ready for...
Just waiting for the Select Board to deal with it.
And I'm getting a sense that even if there's some minor details that you might want to work out, but you're pretty satisfied with what's here, so we can move forward with our work.
There is detail that I'd like to work out, but I'm certainly, it can be a conversation of it either. It just has to do with the insurance for the vehicles. Is that going to be included also? Or had you, what was your thought on that?
At this point, it hasn't been monetized, but it's certainly, I would agree that that's an important thing.
Okay, well, that's the only other thing then.
And the chairs of the two board boards working together last year have really gone, with our fleet schedule identified, it works out about 22% of the vehicles in our fleet are attributed to either the water or the sewer enterprise fund. So yeah, we expect any costs associated with operating those vehicles should be carried. I'll just, obviously I have a vested interest in this, I'll just put one little bit of trivia out there is that during a snowstorm, for instance, where we are plowing snow during the daytime, so it's not being covered by the snow and ice budget, 25% of that workforce is being paid for by the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Just keep that in mind.
And you do a wonderful job, so we don't want to affect that.
Bob and I met earlier today just to talk about tonight's meeting, and we both realized that we did miss one item when looking at this, that we did not allocate any of the OPEB liability to water and sewer. So technically, we should be doing that. I will have to reach out to the actuaries to see how we can allocate that. It's not, I don't know how that will work out, but just like we're doing for the retirement contribution, we should be doing the same thing for OPEB.
Yeah, Westfield just did that last year, and the same auditor that Westfield has and Salt Meadow has, so he can help direct you on how to do that appropriate calculation if you so desire.
Great.
But as Chair last year that really kind of made sure we got this going, this is wonderful. Because we originally just started talking on health insurance, and this has really gone much further. So I applaud you for grabbing hold of it and kind of adopting it.
I remember it's gone into this, I made it down to the number of staff and what they actually do and what's fair, and we've taken a new town engineer and put half of his wages in, which was never in there before. So we've really taken everything, we've identified the vehicles that we're really used for, and don't forget, this is now, all the vehicles will be purchased through the water and sewer or whatever, if they're part of the vehicles that we identified to be part of those departments.
And if I might, I'm just going to basically reiterate what you said, but when we started talking about this, we were talking about major items, and DPW board did take the ball and run with it, and they really, they really wanted to nail down the figure, so I think that's, you know, that's wonderful that.
And I guess, I would just philosophically, I wouldn't get too deep in the weeds.
Right.
At least for the first few years, until you kind of feel things out.
Well, that's the thing.
So if the agreement says you can reconsider it after a year or two years or three years, please take advantage of that, and don't push things when we've made such great progress on this already.
Right. I mean, I realize, you know, there's some items that you may want, you know, the other 5%, so to speak, but as we said before, we don't want to get into figuring out water for each building and, you know, going back and forth and making Sarah run out of the room screaming what she's trying to do.
Yes, please.
Okay.
So Jim, you, if I could, so you were kind of in the middle of all of this, are you pretty happy with the way it played out?
No, I think it makes sense, and it actually, it gets us a long ways away and towards the road that we were talking about, and I think it's a benefit to the town. And as we have the opportunity and get a year under our belt of experience and whatever, we'll have another, you know, look, see and see if there's anything that we need to change, but no, I'm happy with it.
So now, not to put you on the spot, but I will. So they've already, they've already voted to do this, so when would the Board of Selectmen be anticipated to take a vote to approve the agreement?
I was hoping it'd be tonight, but I seem to have an empty chair next to me, but I would think Tuesday, the 20th, because that's our next official meeting, if that, if that works with your schedule.
It does, and I think based on the information that we have here, we're just going to move forward with the numbers that we have here, because you guys are pretty comfortable with it.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
So even without a vote, I think, you know, because we need something to move forward with, so I guess this is going to be our starting point for our work.
Okay, great.
Good.
So it can be amended a little, tweaked a little bit, I mean, but it's still a warm-up.
That went a whole lot faster than I thought it would.
Before you adjourn, I'm not sure if it's going to involve you or not, but on the list of items that the Board, Select Board wanted to talk about with us for capital...
Capital planning?
Yeah. So can we bring that up first while they're still here in case it involves them at all?
Sure. I don't, as I, as we have discussed, I don't think, I think the four items are the IT upgrade, which is the biggest dollar amount one, the clerk treasurer's shredding policy, the vehicle for the rec director, and the two vehicles for the police. So those are the four items that we were going to prioritize, if you will.
Okay.
So I don't think any of those have anything to do with that.
Unless you've given up a used police guard that we could use.
We have a vehicle person as soon as one comes available. I'll let him know that you were looking for one.
He's aware of it, so.
He is, okay.
We have dental discussions, okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did you take your vote?
Another Crown Vic.
You didn't take your vote.
To adjourn?
Oh, I thought you moved the motion, and I didn't hear the vote. That's pretty quick.
Okay, so then keeping with the agenda, so a while back, this committee had sent your board a letter asking you to look into some, what we view as cost-saving measures for the community. Those items are the Employee Healthcare Plan, elected officials' healthcare being offered healthcare, and the local options meals tax. So I was kind of hoping we could get some update on to where we're at with those.
We, we have taken a vote, and we have sent letters out to the representatives of the union saying we are going to look into potential changes in, in healthcare, you know, we're waiting, we haven't decided yet, we're trying to get some information from Scantic Valley. They don't even have the rate set, and we were going to try to get, I believe, and Nick can certainly add to this, we're trying to get the effects of different, different things, be it, you know, raising a deductible, copays, things like that, so we can actually, because we have to go to them with a specific plan. So that's what we're in the process of doing, and hopefully we'll do that in short order, obviously, because we don't want to hold you up, and we don't want to hold them up, but we do have to, we'll be having discussion with them regarding, regarding our potential, you know, any, any potential changes that we're presenting here or proposing, so.
So at this point, you're just waiting for the info from...
Right, and this is something else that we may be taking up next Tuesday, you know, we get the information, so.
So I'm kind of confused by what you just said, so if you took a vote...
Good at that. When we had to take a vote...
To do what?
We had to take a vote, I don't know if you can explain it any better, Nick, we had to take a vote to...
To be able to even look at, possibility of making any changes in the health plan.
First, we have to take a vote that we're going to look into, I forgot what section...
Labor council had advised the board to take the vote again to reaffirm that they are going to adopt Chapter 32.
Okay, that's, that's fine, okay, I get it.
Right.
Yep, okay.
And as far as the other items, we, we've had some basic discussion, we will, elected officials' healthcare, we, we discussed it, we have differing opinions on, or we may have the same opinion, but we, nobody's overly thrilled about doing anything with it because we're afraid it's going to affect our quality of candidates we get, and we're still discussing that, to be perfectly blunt.
We're still waiting for some additional information.
Right. Now, local options, meals tax, we have brought it up, but we haven't really discussed, yes.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sure.
So can we just go back a minute? What additional information do you, are you looking to gather on that issue?
We, we're going to see how many people are on the plan.
What the true costs are.
Yeah, what the true costs are, and see what, I know you guys had thrown a figure out, which I believe is like $75,000. I don't know if that's the final accurate figure.
Well, last year, I believe there were, at the time, so this was like, well, about a year ago, there were like eight part-time elected officials and three retired elected officials.
And how many retired?
Three. And I can't remember the difference between family and single, but at the time, it equated to $75,000. So that's kind of the numbers, I think, that we used in the letter.
And in our preliminary investigation, and once again, correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but I believe our town attorney said that we really can't do much with the retired officials, you know, so that's, you know, that's sort of off the table, although it's only in your, in your calculation, three-elevenths of the total, so. But still, you know, just to let you know that, because I know there's been some, some concerns, and obviously you don't want to have someone who's, who's set with a plan, you know, feel they're going to lose it, so. So in that regard, we're not, we, I mean, we won't do anything, you know, with them, but we may, you know, we may have questions about going forward, maybe not offering it to future people, you know, we're trying to look into different ways we can do it.
So I guess I'm going to ask this question, so prior, are you taking a vote one way or the other, are you going to hold a public hearing on it, or public comment?
As far as, for the elected officials? Or just in general?
For the public, to come in and express their feelings on it one way or the other.
Which topic? I feel, I feel like separate topics, that's what I'm asking.
On continuing health insurance for part-time elected officials.
Okay.
And you are the, you are the local authority that makes the decision on the eligibility, so I guess I'm questioning whether you're going to hold a public hearing on that or not.
Yeah, we haven't discussed that, you know, holding a hearing, but it's certainly something to take into consideration.
Okay.
Because obviously, we, you know, my thought process was, you know, thinking about it from the standpoint of keeping good elected officials, but also the thought processes were working on behalf of the taxpayers.
Yeah.
So if they don't think it's a good idea, then, then obviously, you know, based on surveys and hearings and things, then we have to, you know, we have to decide based on what's best for the town, not just, so. Yes, ma'am? Sorry, I'm saying, ma'am.
An observation regarding health insurance for part-time elected officials. Couple of things I'm sure you've thought about and discussed, and this is a personal opinion only. I appreciate the need for quality candidates. I think things like grandfathering, therefore, there can be possibly maybe a really objective view and look see over the policies. The other thing to think, and I floated this before, was we can't, we can only control certain components of the health insurance cost from here and going forward. I don't know that they're going to get better, they're probably going to get higher and less under our control. However, things like salaries for elected officials are something that are under our purview and we can control. Maybe a shift should be looked at, not right away, but in the future, to have better stipends to attract good, quality candidates, and we can control those versus something where they're getting run away. Just an opinion.
That makes sense, yeah.
I think it's good.
I think it's been 20 years, the same stipends that, like for our board, our board, I don't think the, our past salary is increasing in the last 20 years.
I just want to make a note that Don came up with a real good idea.
Yeah?
It seemed to reflect that.
Wow. Want to get that out of your bag?
Go ahead.
I just have a kind of a procedural question. So I don't know what your salary is, but let's say, all right, so you're, let's say you're $6,000.
No, 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 not at all.
$2,000, okay. Well, what if the, the required contribution that you have to pay, or someone in your position would have to pay, doesn't cover the total, your salary doesn't cover the total contribution? How is that administered? How does that work? Or do you have to pay from your own pocketbook to cover that additional contribution?
That's exactly it.
That's how it works?
Yeah.
And it's $592,000, I don't know what you're talking about.
What's that?
Or what we get. $66,000, times four is 592, I don't know what you're paying with the $2,000.
No, we get, we get more than, we get...
Well, it was hypothetical, it was hypothetical.
Well, Chairman gets $200, the, the other board members...
I don't remember, it's not a whole lot.
No, I know that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think it was like $160 bucks a month or something like that, it worked out.
The chairman is, is correct, that the remaining amount is...
Billed out.
Comes down, yep, they receive bills monthly.
Sure.
Same thing for retirees, since they're not receiving us any finances from us, they also get billed monthly and have to send in checks.
But all those are good ideas, and obviously when we look at all these, it seems like we can do something with the employee, the part-time employees, you know, like the officials' healthcare, but we also want to see when we start doing something with the regular healthcare, you know, as far as changing deductibles and things, we want to see the dollar effect on that, because I think that may be, you know, it may help everybody. I mean, I know I've been approached by people saying that the, the problem is you get somebody who's heavy into using their health insurance, it's going to hurt them, but it's all, you know, you're going to have the opposite where someone's going to get a higher, say it's a higher deductible, just for argument's sake, their rate goes down, so therefore they pay less. If they never use the higher deductible, they're ahead of the game, you know, and it's, you have to walk that fine line between the people who are in that situation... it's, you have to walk that fine line between the people who are in that situation and the people who have three kids and use up their, you know, their max every year, and, you know, you, you, in a perfect world, you don't want to hurt anybody, but you know it's inevitable that somebody's going to come out on the short end of the stick.
But I think it's easy enough to get real-time information on that, because enough members of the trust have gone to the higher deductible plans, and so you can certainly reach out to some of the fellow members and say, hey, how's it working out in your community? What are the issues? What are the problems? What are the pros? What are the cons? And get some real-time, yeah, we went to the higher, Long Meadow went to the higher deductible, and, I mean, knock on wood, I got a healthy family, so it really has made little impact on our family.
Right, right.
And in fact, the biggest impact is, you're right, I'm paying a lower premium, but, but, I mean, I'm just one. What I'm saying is, I think, am I correct in saying that East Long Meadow is the only one that hasn't opted for one of the optional plans?
No, no.
No?
No. East Long Meadow, what, at the, originally, Long Meadow was the only one that went to the, had a deductible. I don't know since...
I think it's Long Meadow and maybe only the school district.
The school district, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But I mean, you can, you can reach out and, you know, see how it's worked out.
Yeah, well, that's part of what, that's part of our fact finding deal, so.
But it's, the problem is, that goes up every year four or five percent, and Scantic Valley may subsidize that, so it's an artificial, they're artificially keeping the rate down, and that's costing the town money down the road, because eventually, they're not going to have those reserves, and it's, you're going to go from, you know, a one or two percent to a ten percent, and it's going to be a rate shock for the town, which is paying seventy percent of the cost or more. And I think that's what we're trying to avoid.
Plan for, yeah, yeah.
And plan for, so.
Well, what was it, last year, we were fortunate enough to have a zero percent increase?
Because they subsidized it.
And then this year, you were planning on a six percent?
And three years ago, they subsidized, subsidized it again, and, I mean, eventually, that's going to run out.
Right, right.
Okay, meals tax?
Actually, we, we haven't really discussed this to any great length. Once again, it's, it's something we, we'll definitely plan on taking up Tuesday. It doesn't seem like, I mean, it's basically a, a use, use tax, you know, you want to go out to dinner, you're paying a tax, so it's not, it only affects the people who are eating. I personally, I know we're one of the few communities who doesn't have it, I believe. I don't know anybody else in the area who, who does not have it, and I, I was, I don't deal with any clients who have that, so I found it interesting that it's actually administered through the state, which I thought is, anyways, I keep my opinion to myself, but anyways, the fact that they collect it and disperse it is interesting, but, yeah, it's something we definitely look into, especially in our town, where it seems like there's new restaurants opening on a weekly basis, and so if we can, if we can tap that resource and not really hurt the general taxpayer, then, you know, it's definitely something to look into, and we will...
So, as you consider all these, I just kind of want to give you one other thing to think about. You heard our presentation when we handed out the budget instructions, and how we are growing ever closer to that twenty-five dollar per thousand cap.
Yes.
We really need, and these are hard decisions, they're tough decisions, and I don't envy you for having to make them, because quite frankly, you can't make them without hurting somebody in some fashion.
Right, right.
I mean, that's the reality of it, and I understand that. But with, with that said, we really need to look at our revenue and our spending, because over the long-term health, otherwise, you know, I always use the analogy that there's, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, but we need to make sure that light's not a train coming down the track, so, you know, and I really do think that now's the time that we need to be looking at both our revenue and our spending to, to, to control it in order to accomplish what we need to accomplish in the town and still keep it affordable, so, otherwise, it's going to be a train wreck, so.
Hate to put you on the spot again, but, so we're going to be done with our budget deliberations and have to get something to, to remind our, our famous calendar, probably by...
I'll give you the date, I've got it right here.
So, I guess, would you give us a commitment that you will have taken a vote one way or the other?
April third.
On the meals tax, prior to us having to have a final recommendation?
Definitely, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's another, it's another two and a half or three months.
Absolutely.
Right, but still, yeah, rather sooner than later, because then you know what you're dealing with, so.
So, you had added, added to the item, we touched on it a little bit, the capital planning items, now, did you want to discuss those? Well, this, we've not, I'll tell you where we're at right now, we've not yet gotten capital planning's report. I suspect, Rocco, you're not done with your work yet.
That's correct.
Okay. So, we really haven't, other than, we're, we're trying to work in the, the capital budget into our, into our budget, but outside of that, we haven't had any discussions on any specifics with the capital committee yet at this point.
In light of that, since I, our third board member isn't here, can we get to our priority list Tuesday? You know, if we got, did we vote on it at our meeting Tuesday? Is that a problem?
Actually, you don't even owe us a priority list for capital, you probably owe it to the capital planning committee.
It's on your list. But sure, yeah, if we can do that, if that's okay.
Tuesday?
Yeah. Well, we'll vote on it, I, I just want the whole board here, you know, to, to give their opinion, so if we can do that at our Tuesday meeting.
All right, we meet on Wednesday, that would be...
Okay.
Perfect for us, so that we know what your priorities are.
We'll make sure, we'll make sure that gets accomplished.
Okay.
Okay, great. That's what we had for us, isn't this with you guys, yeah?
Yeah, I'd like to take a motion for the board of selectmen to move into executive session to discuss matters of union and non-union negotiations, to return to open session only to adjourn.
So, move.
I'll second on necessity, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, selectman Thorpe?
Yes.
Selectman Federice, yes.
Thank you guys for coming in, we appreciate it.